This is all we're expecting, so we can get started whenever you want, Commissioner Sovey. I think Hank is gonna sort of be the logistics, although I'll be doing the presentation on the proposed ordinance.
Great. So I'll call the meeting to order. I think first on the agenda though is public comment. So if there's anybody online that wishes to speak or has called in. Press star nine and we'll call on you for public comment.
Or use the raise hand feature.
There are no raised hands at this time. Okay, so we'll move on from public comment to first agenda item of building height calculations.
Right, that means that is me moment why put together.
Recording in progress.
Thank you, Hank. All right, can everybody see calculating building height? Great. So it's been a long time since I've been to the ORC. It feels like it's been forever. Thank you so much. There was, planning staff is really bombarded right now and Hank and Alexis are working hard on a series of ordinance amendments that you are going to be facing, but because of some shifting priorities, I had the opportunity to put something on your agenda that's been sort of a hot button issue for me and some folks in the city, both staff, property owner developers. And in short, I wanted to pitch some proposed clarifications to how we measure and calculate building height and most importantly, how we communicate it. So we're just going to cover a couple of aspects I put together. There's a memo included in the packet. This PowerPoint will be added to the agenda packet, meeting materials for the public to see after the fact. So if you have any questions, anybody viewing, or if you have any questions, you'll be able to come back to it. So the way we measure building height is both a little simple and a little complex and I think not clear as I'll get to them in a moment. There's two principal definitions in the Unified Development Code or the UDC that govern this. One is building height. It's the vertical distance of a building measured from the finished grade to the highest point of the roof surface. You'll see some other, obviously the definition goes on to distinguish between different roof types, but I think the thing I want to emphasize here is it is the highest point of the roof surface. So there has been confusion frankly amongst staff, amongst property owners as to whether this applies to an elevation, does it, how do you consider if, you know, consider a building that might be stepped in different ways? Are you measuring it on a per elevation perspective? But from a building height definition, it is simply picking the highest plane by which that building sort of projects into space as the building height definition. The calculation of that building height is measured from something called finished grade. And this definition, I just want to be honest that I think sometimes I've been working with this definition for my six years of the city now, six years. Whatever time that is, seven years. And there's times where I look at this and it seems clear as day. And there are other times that I can talk myself into a circle about what does this definition actually mean? And so I'm going to attempt to sort of share with you some of the confusion that I've experienced and frankly, my own brain and with conversations with others, both architects, property owners, developers, how we calculate that. And I also want to just name that this is very intimidating for me to go forward with this. You're going to see some of my graphic design abilities, which are lackluster graphic design abilities. And so should there be any architects in the house, please show some grace. So one of the ways is how, the questions that have arise, how this definition can apply and how all sides of a building should be considered and compared. And like I said, I at times, I don't think that this definition is as clear as it could be to achieve the outcome that we desire. One way that I think that it is reasonable to read this, and I am absolutely, as you can see, honing in on a couple of points of emphasis, is that the finished grade definition talks about each side of a structure and the elevation of each side. And so I think a reasonable way to read that definition is to say that that's how we calculate it. And so in the case of this very detailed architectural elevation design here, you would be, there would be two different building heights calculated for this building. One is going to be the definition average between points A and B and one facade of the building. And then the other one is points B and C on the other side of the building. In this case, you could get two different building calculations from those two different facades. BC could be compliant, AB would not be compliant. One read of this definition would be therefore this building doesn't meet the building height. There is a building height plane measurement that exceeds the height that is permissible in that district, whatever that district is. Another way to interpret this, and frankly, this is how we typically do it in practice, but I think that we can do a better job of communicating this to the public is to try and take a holistic, a more holistic approach as to truly averaging the elevation of the ground using the highest and lowest point of each side. That is, in the most simple calculus here, it would be eight points. Highest and lowest grade is sort of taken and these are, these are all elevation markings typically on a set of plans. And so we would take AB, BC, the corresponding high and low points all the way around the building, average them all together to get a single finished grade point. This is, again, this is how we typically apply that definition. I think that you can rightfully interpret that is the way to do it to the definition, but as I showed before, it's not as crystal clear, I believe, as it could be. Another question that I pose is that one of the things that we do is measure height five feet away from the elevation of the building. I think frankly, there are times that a project could skew the height calculation either higher or lower depending on that measurement. We have seen projects, most of these examples here where you might see something that a building is really elevated, but a five foot point away from the building is a different grade than maybe where the plane of that elevation wall actually meets the ground. Commissioner Sovey, just before this meeting, shared that that sort of offset is a common approach that's also replicated in some building code calculations. So maybe that's where it originated. But it can result in both, again, artificial adjustments to what that reference point is by either depressions in a site. Think about like an at-grade access heading down to a basement access to a building or the other way where you could artificially build up grade around the building up to five feet and have it drop off to sort of provide a little bit higher starting elevation. So these are just a couple of sites around the city or plans that I just, I was sort of looking for examples where how we measure that might be quite different from a five foot separation from the elevation to where that plane actually meets the grade. Lastly, I can't profess that this has been a big point that has come up with a lot of developers and architects and property owners, but it's something that's sort of just personally nodded me a little bit. We talk about averaging the elevation along each side by using the high and low point. I'm not sure average is the right term. If we really wanted to average that elevation, it might involve taking some more points, like this is a really extreme example here where the average of this elevation might be a different elevation than simply taking the midpoints where you've got a wider band of this building actually at a lower elevation than a very small piece at the high. So it's not to say that I think average is the right way to go. I think midpoint is actually a pretty logical and a pretty clear way for us to delineate that, communicate it. But we use the term average and I, I'm no mathematician, but I just don't know if that's the best way or the clearest way that we should be articulating that. So in the memo that was provided in advance, I provided a series of examples from a lot of different communities and these were really ranged. You'll see, I think, I'm not going to go over them in detail. I'm happy to address any questions. These were just searches that I've done, so I want to be clear. I haven't had a lot of any conversation with my colleagues at these other communities, but you'll see a really wide range of how communities define height. From the simple places like Ypsilanti, takes a single plane of elevation that's the front of the building. That building height elevation doesn't take anything into account on the sides or rear of the building in those circumstances. It is strictly emphasizing how that building height relates to the street. Up to more really complex, compelling in some ways definitions, like one that really stands out to me is Sonomish County. I hope I'm pronouncing that right in Washington. That is, I think, a very clear way. It's sort of, it sort of directs users to draw the most sort of compact rectangle it can around a building, pick points along that rectangle to establish that average grade. I think that that is a really nice way to reflect a sort of a sloping site or a slate that has sort of a complex grading pattern to it. But at the same time, trying to communicate via definition, even maybe with the graphics such as I included their examples, maybe that's not keeping this as simple as it needs to be. So a lot of examples there. Generally, I would say that our definition is in line with a lot of definitions. Our definition, like a lot of other communities definitions, try to address and account for some complexity with grade. Again, there are a couple that are very simple, just one facade or the highest point measurement of a building. For the most part of these communities, most of them are trying to recognize that the earth is not always flat. Sites are not always flat and we should be responsive to how we account for that in the definition of building height. So a couple of proposed changes that I would like to consider. First of all, I think our building height definition is pretty good. It emphasizes a single point. It emphasizes that that's the highest point. It talks about the difference of how that's measured, be it a gable roof, flat roof, what have you. We've had a lot of conversations about things that should or shouldn't be included in that building height calculation. I want to be clear, I'm not proposing any changes to that here. This is really just trying to figure out the best way to articulate and communicate when we mean building height. What do we mean? And how do you calculate it on an easy site or a challenging site? But my intention is to accomplish that by two potential amendments to the UDC. One is finished grade definition, trying to perhaps more clearly, this is a start. I've thought about restructuring this more drastically, but I started from the outset of just trying some slight modifications to the language to try to more closely align what the text says with how it is interpreted to make it a little bit more clear. I could see this actually evolving to be some sort of combination with a graphic or illustration that actually includes a formula. Whether it's like the Sonomish County or some other example, we would really ideally put together something that would be just really clear as day that somebody could say, hey, in this example, A plus B plus C is calculated to get to an average, you calculate it to this building height and that is your single finished grade, your single building height to answer that question whether your property is meeting the building height requirements of the city code. Again, we've provided some exceptions already for things like solar panels. We've had conversations with a lot of developers in the past, things about elevator overruns, mechanical, but then the like. It's not to say that those aren't good or bad. I'm not proposing any changes to those at this time. I just want to start with maybe a little bit more focus and clarity about what we mean when we mean building height. So Commissioner Sovey, as I mentioned, had also sent some, a couple of examples from the building code. We can pull those up, but my quick review of those seems to suggest that it's pretty consistent with this sort of averaging. It is, I think it's a six foot offset of the building code.
When it slopes, yeah.
When it slopes, yeah. And it does, it's a much higher quality graphic than I've just presented to you, but it does articulate that sort of eight points of a four-sided building are averaged together to create sort of a plane or a finished grade by which we measure. And I could, Hank or I could potentially pull those up. We just got those via email if you'd like to see those examples. But I'll stop there, address any questions. And again, the big takeaways are, I don't, this isn't, these changes don't propose a change to how we're measuring building height now. I think that we can do a better job with clarity. It doesn't happen all the time, but I, zoning coordinator and reviewing home permits, planners reviewing site plans, the question can be a question. It can require some explanation and it seems like something we could probably do a better job of defining, articulating so that we can get onto more substantive aspects of permit and plan. What do you think?
Who wants to start?
Since I do have to peace out in 12 minutes, sorry. I, my sense is a good graphic, which if, and, and trying to harmonize to the extent possible with the building code makes a whole lot of sense to me so that we are not like doing one calculation for one thing and another calculation for another thing. I would rather not try to recreate the wheel in all of this. So that would, that would be my vote. Also, like, yeah, I like, I also don't want us to like spend tons and tons and tons of time on this. So just like clarity, I like the approach of like just making it clear. And so maybe it's some words and maybe it's the picture, but honestly, I haven't seen, like, I didn't check my email to see what's in the building code, but maybe if, if it is so close and we're not changing what the heights are, it's just how it's calculated in this situation. Like that seems to me to be the really straightforward way to do it.
Yeah, I'm pulling up, I think the most, the graphic in the building code that was, I felt was sort of the most in line with what I was trying to articulate, which is this grade plane. And I guess Commissioner Sovey, would you mind walking through just, you use this every day or more frequently than I do at least?
Yeah, I think a couple of things similar to like the Ypsilanti code. If the kind of top height of the page, whereas the street level where a point one elevation, 100 feet is, like that's where it's pretty flat. And then this graphic takes into account both a flat plane and then where it slopes. I think the thing that's a little bit unique and not clear in this from the building code perspective still is like at what slope, like a very flat slope, right? Like a 1% slope versus a 20% slope, like when do you start to measure to kind of flatten this thing out? Typically because you're, you're measuring at like a half a foot or a foot kind of measure point. It's when there's like bigger deviations. So I would say like the, the main takeaway of what matches closely, but has this unique kind of factor is the gray part is it trying to give a level datum across that sloped area. And so there's kind of like ghosted lines where the building falls below that datum. Does a little bit averaged out when it starts to look at that back lot line and that's six feet. So building code works in a six foot margin instead of a five foot. I think the only thing also in this, it's like whether it's a round building and I think it's a minimum of four points. So you just find four equal points along some kind of, you know, perimeter of the building to try to find the average as well.
And I would, a similar thing about our definitions now is you look at finished grade. It says when, when it is not flat. And depending how you measure that, I have never seen a flat site in the city of Ann Arbor. There's always some grade change to it. So I think that, that is an interesting aspect. It sounds like the building code sort of wrestles with that in the same way, like when is a slope a slope?
I have a question about the building code and, and if Commissioner Sovey, you're not that old. So, but I'm curious about like how long this has been here, like is this something that changes? Because if it doesn't, then again, I don't want to peg us to something else if that's, if it's regularly up for discussion about how to do that. But again, I, I just vote for like making it easier for everybody.
So this is 2015 building code because that's what it's enacted in Michigan right now. We're moving to 2021 hopefully. So 10 years. Well, for this one, but it, this sort of calculation, because it's not really a life safety. It's a kind of industry measure does not change.
Okay, that's what I thought. Like it's, it's the same graphic that's been in the last like
Yep.
Number. I mean, we don't have to go back, but if we don't know, like maybe just going back and spot checking what it was 10 years ago. Well, now it's almost 10 years, 15 years ago. Yeah.
Yeah. Commissioner Sovey, do you know if it's a similar convention for the residential code?
I can double check. I, yeah, I can correlate this and send it over.
Okay.
You can give me homework this time around.
I like that. It's usually the other way around. Any other thoughts? I mean, again, I, just like you said, Commissioner Mills, I don't think it's that complex. When we, I just want to name, I think when, when we talk about building height in the community, I think people can be concerned. And in a way, I think the more clarity that is in writing and in illustrations, it just helps set the baseline for everybody with, with how, how to consider and review and respond to projects.
I'll just chime back in that like, I think one of the best things that we have is when people don't just do the elevation from the street views from the different things, but then put it in the context of kind of what's next door. Like especially where those, there's those crazy elevation changes over like from one side, like from one side of the property to the next. I, I find that those things, I don't know that we actually require them, but I think that those things help me as a planning commissioner much better understand how this fits in that context. And I think it's a good tool for neighbors as well. So again, how does that come about? Like, are we requiring it?
We typically don't. It's, we have more requirements with planning and development for conceptual 3D renderings, perspectives and the like. We don't typically require with site plans, you know. I would say it's one of those great examples that sometimes, I can't speak to the designer side. Probably sometimes it's, might be easier put together than others. And it's just something we want to be mindful of about, you know, what information we're requiring because every time we add something to that checklist, there is a cost related to a petitioner putting that together. So.
Figuring out what the actual height, I mean, it's hard to measure like what the actual height in that other place is. So yeah, I'm, thank you for that regular reminder. We regularly need to say that. I will also say, if a developer asks, like, it doesn't hurt, like that helps me, but.
Commissioner Hammership?
I'm like, do I, I just have a couple of questions. I think this is, this is great. It's always great to clarify. And just so I'm clear, are you proposing then like to take away that five foot? So it would just be from the, from the like where the structure?
Yeah, it's a question. I, the five foot seems more consistent with building code. So you just saw for, for building codes, they bet the, the Michigan building code. So that's basically larger units and commercial structures that uses a six foot offset. You'll see a lot of communities do that. I think part of that is probably for some of those pictures I showed you that, you know, picture, a picture of building and the grade falls off drastically. You know, it would be easy to sort of build the grade up artificially right to the base of the wall to sort of cheat, if you, if you want to call it that, getting, attaining a taller building height. This requires you to cheat by doing it out five feet. And so is that better? It's a question. I don't, I don't feel strongly about it. Given the building code definition, I have to say I'm sort of, for the consistency of standard, I am feeling now a little less like that should be an important distinction, like probably more consistency with those two is better. But it just can artif, I don't want to say artificially, it can impact the calculation of it both, both ways. We've seen, we've seen cutout sidewalks along a building where the grade is higher, like with a retaining wall next to it. And in that case, the property owner is like, well, but you're making me measure here and that's only like a six foot sidewalk, the grid, the adjacent grade is three foot higher over this retaining wall. But it can, that, we gotta pick, we've got to draw the line somewhere. And so unless you do something complex, like I think one of the communities was like, find the lowest elevation point within 25 feet of the structure anywhere to the highest point. And again, I, I don't think one's right or wrong. It's a question, I guess. It's a long way of saying it. And I would, I would probably soften that question now seeing the building code for the sake of consistency.
Yeah, I like the idea of making it simple and I like, I always like the idea of being consistent. You mentioned like this is not looking at like what shouldn't, shouldn't be included. And I feel like I remember conversations from maybe that old DTE site about like their solar panels were too high. Do you envision that like at some point, like once we sort of determine like how to move forward on this? Like we will look at like what, because I mean, things like that to me, like if they're, if it's doing good, like maybe there should be some exceptions, like what are your thoughts on?
We already have an exception for solar panels. So we provide a height exception for solar panels up to limit. So, and the reason for that was say some building has been built up to the maximum height 20 years ago. And now they want to come in and put solar panels on it. We, we wouldn't want to be in a position, or I wouldn't want to be in a position to say, you can't put solar panels on that roof because you're going to exceed the height. So we've already provided that call out. I'll take that a step further and say we've gotten feedback saying like, why are you measuring the height of a downtown building to the elevator overrun? That is a relatively small portion of that roof. Arguably much less impactful than the parapet wall or sort of the cap of the bulk of the building. I'm sure there's another term that I'm missing. But our code says everything has to fall within that height limit, whether it's a piece of, whether it's a heat pump, whether it's an air handler, whether it's an elevator overrun, the only exception we provide is specifically for solar panels. So that conversation could extend to other things that we think fall into that category. I'm not proposing those here.
That's right. That's like an increment.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I'm good with like consistency and like simplicity and measurement. I liked your drawings. They're better than I could have done.
Thank you.
Also, did you guys hear Arlington County voted to like eliminate single family zoning? I just saw that as one of the examples and I was like, that was exciting.
Um, do any of the, along those lines, any of the example illustrations resonate with you? The building code one is clear but complex to me. Um, I don't know that that's the one I would go to.
That cutout thing that's really weird that makes it confusing.
Sloppy average datum plane. Yeah.
Yeah.
Were there any examples in the memo that sort of, and you don't have to pick one, but I, I would just love to hear some feedback. These are the ones that really stood out to me as, oh, that's, that makes sense to me because that's part of what this is, is like as a user of it. Is there one that just seems logical?
I don't have them memorized. I mean, like the YPSY just measuring it from the front like doesn't make that much sense to me because like there is stuff on the back and then, I don't know, like the, the one you, the picture you just showed of like measuring it from like, if you have like below grade that's finished, but like it's not necessarily like impacting like sightlines. Like that also doesn't make sense to me. Like I feel like it should be a grade. So I guess like what we have now, or at least with like the five feet or six feet or whatever from like the, the grade like makes more sense to me than like doing it any of those two ways.
And I, I guess I am jumping to the conclusion that you are advising me that yes, we should account for slope. We don't want a single elevation to dictate the building height. We want it to sort of respond to a site. And so I am jumping to the conclusion that that is resonating with you as far as how we craft this for eventual presentation to the whole planning commission. I guess more pointedly, the, do you see more detailed image, like the YPSY images, for example? I remember those from my time at YPSY, you know, 25 years ago, same, same height elevation, super simple. Ranging from the example in the memo of like Ridgefield, Connecticut, which is sort of a lot more in-depth. It's got sort of like drawing sort of bubbles around buildings and calculating. The example they show is like 22 points of average grade around it. So.
I like Boulder's XO. I like an XO because it helps with like a anomaly, not a box. anomaly, not a box and articulate some points. And maybe it's something between like Boulder's XO and the building code one that you just like delete some chaos off of it.
Yeah.
Um, to make it simpler.
Any other ones jump out to anybody?
I had one. Um,
Boulder, by the way, is the one that has like, it's got three images.
Yeah, Boulder. I was looking at Boulder as soon as Commissioner Sovey was saying that. And I don't fully understand it, but like it seems simple.
Only we knew an architect that could help us sketch some.
I'll draw it for you. Don't worry.
It's gonna be your. I was gonna say, I thought the Snohomish one, like the, the left thing made it clear what points you were talking about, like that made it clear, the A B C D.
Yeah.
Um,
That's the like, well, I guess I'm, see, I'm not, I'm just like, why is there this weird like rectangle, like chopped up?
Agreed. That's what I was unclear about. Like what are, what exactly, but I guess it's because they're taking the box because you might have in places where it steps in and steps out and you're just effectively drawing the box around it. Uh, but then if that's not what, again, marrying it to the building code just makes a whole lot more sense. So.
You gotta think of like very like weird, like sneaky in buildings, a bounding box around that might mean your point between A and D is actually like 30 feet away from any point on the building. And it could be like in the middle of the wetland or something like.
Right. That doesn't really make sense.
More than six feet sort of thing. Yeah.
And I, and I think that's a good point that we don't have, it doesn't have to be eight points, right? It could be 12 points. It could be 50 points if there's 25 sides to a building, right? So, um, I think the Snohomish is trying to account for that. I think we could probably be plenty clear with some illustrations and cleaning up our language. And frankly, whether we're applying this to four sides or 10 sides, it's probably still going to be pretty logical. At least that's what I'm, my story now.
Can you, like, how are there eight sides?
Uh,
If it's not a box.
It's not a box.
It's kind of like a courtyard and it wiggles.
So it's basically like every corner.
Corner. Yeah. And then you go, what if it's round? It has no corners.
Then you, that's the, like the equidistant.
Yeah. Minimum of four points, maximum as many corners. I would just kind of write like from building code, this is beyond the kind of standard language to make match. A couple of things I'm thinking about is, or like building code, we have height limits to different types of building construction and starting to think about reconciling those. Like we have a lot of stuff that's like 85 feet or, you know, like see how those match. And then again, like if you say your building is 85 feet, that means to the roof, not the overruns and things, because it's about life safety and basically where your people and their feet go to run away from a fire. So like, it's probably a longer conversation to start to admit other things from the roof measurement. Um, but it just makes it one calculation for consistency.
And that, I, that makes sense to me, but I also want to name that I have had conversations with architects. Uh, I've actually had an exchange going this week with an architect who is trying to reconcile that, you know, the bill, the residential code says single family dwelling. The UDC says single family dwelling, but those might mean sort of two different things. So I, I, I just want to name that at times, like it's not to say that the UDC will match the building code, but something like this where it does make sense for there to be consistency, I think having that transferability does make sense. But I don't think to Commissioner Sovey's point, I think that's worthwhile of a conversation. But I don't always know that our zoning regulations need to follow. We might, we might want it. We might want an 85 height limit, even though that doesn't relate to the floor of somebody escaping fire for some other reason. So, um, I see the benefits of consistency, but I don't think it always has to define where we go.
Yeah. And I think it's more like if they nearly match.
Yeah.
Maybe reconcile, but if we're like starting to jump 20 feet up or down, then we're, we have different goals of the thing. But if both of them are like 85 feet, you're like 85 feet for building height versus 85 feet for zoned height. We should just line those things up, sort of thing. Um, the other thing that I threw in here that, uh, is stories above and below the grade plane, which I thought was kind of an interesting way that the building measures it. I'm just thinking about things like if you do parking half a grade below grade plane, right? It doesn't count towards FAR. If it's more than half a grade below, I believe is part of the link. It's like, it's something like not completely suppressed, but mostly. But in terms of maybe our goals of activating the street, if you bury something three quarters of a grade below, but now you don't have storefront, what does that look like? And so does defining the grade plane also mean for like TC1 and things? How do we activate the street? And it, do we actually catch that well? Um,
Well, that comes into play now. We have some height provisions, for example, where if you park under the building, you can have an increased height or under previous, it's actually less applicable now under our previous definitions of four area ratio. Um, oftentimes it was a sort of more convoluted if the space could be made habitable. And now we've really cleaned that up just to say we're counting exterior walls. And so, um, but that is inclusive of basements. So, um, I think that, like in the case of that, what you're talking about there, the story above grade plane, that doesn't necessarily impact height calculations of the building code. It calculates what counts as a story for the, for other aspects of that. Okay.
Yeah. Cause like building code might have 85 foot height limit and eight stories or something like that. Because you can also like mix and match. So you could have like three, like that's where you do like the podium, like five over ones is when you're mixing and matching those together to like add the stories and the heights or one height. And then like you have a height above, but your grade plane is actually sitting on top of the podium sort of thing. That's where it gets kind of a little messy again. Um,
That's also, that's really, a really common convention, right? There's a ton of buildings built across the country for that reason, where you got sort of like a more, I'm sure I have this wrong, but a more fire resistant first floor podium and then stick construction above that. Because there's some building code logic there.
Yeah.
And I think like you're saying, 85, an 85 foot building height limit with eight stories, depending on where you start that grade, you might very, you might not be able to get eight stories within that. So.
Yep. So yeah, so we're not ever measuring stories.
Yeah.
Here, um, for it, but that grade plane, I think relative to activating the street, if there's ever, I don't think there is, but I just kind of bring it up in case there's just like a cursory review of the UDC to make sure as we're measuring this.
Yeah.
We get that way through room. I can think of, um, and maybe it's even like in the floodplain. I know the building next to blank slate that storefront actually goes suppressed. And so it's more in the floodplain. Uh, and to like waterproof it with our floodplain standards, you'd have to like waterproof it up to like seven feet. So right, like no outlets or, and like all of your plumbing has, so you can't put a bathroom in that suite because you'd be sitting at the ceiling to do so. Um, so it's just like kind of nuanced things between the two that you're like, will we ever see something cool next to blank slate? And the answer is no. Never. Um, so those are just like other things I may be thinking about. I don't like, I don't know if they like relate exactly, but just kind of.
No, I think this is, this is great. Like this, the, again, I, the, the offset, maybe it makes sense to go to six foot. So there's just like a, a logic there so that if only for somebody submitting their site plans to the planning commission refer review and then the subsequent building plans to, that it's the same. I mean, those little things make a difference in cost and efficiency of seeing that project through.
Mm-hmm. Yep. Well, even, um, or is it like for insurance purposes or, you know, funding purposes, discrepancies between plans uh, can kind of cause fiction for friction for financing and things. So it's like, this is this, like, your plans are inconsistent. So if you're, your building height is marked the same on all the permits that you've seen it, um, it makes it more comfortable for everybody to. What I'd say.
All right. Barring any other feedback I am hearing, yep, can see some of the muddiness of our current definition. Like me, don't envision a, a change to it, but rather a clarity to how we define it. So it's easier for everybody looking at a addition to their home to a taller, you know, 10 story building in the city, just making it clear so that designers, owners, property owners are all on the same page about exactly how that's going to do, how be calculated. Try to provide pro, um, um, depending on your generosity, um, something like Boulder where we try to really perhaps really try to communicate it graphically in a couple of different ways, just to try to account for questions and clarity. Again, I think those, those images can be really powerful when somebody's trying to reconcile what that means. And, um, there's a lot of opportunities to do this in our code. So in a way, this is a great sort of kicking off point to, um, we, we talk a lot about different ways that we can illustrate provisions in our code. And maybe this could even set sort of some expectations about how we do that going forward. Um, it might be good to start experimenting with that so that once we get to the end of our upcoming comp plan process, we have a good sort of format and convention about how we want to ex- explore and illustrate some of those things.
I was, I have on my list too, that I'm going to check residential and commercial code and if they're measured differently.
Yeah.
And then I'm also going to go in the backlog of Michigan building codes and see of like at least the last few adopted, if it's changed at all.
But you already know it's not changing with the two 2021.
Uh, not, not that I know of. No. Yeah. I can, I can triple check that one, but
Yeah.
I haven't seen anything. I've seen some, you know, like literature about the things that should be changing and that's not it.
Awesome. That's all I have. Unless you have anything else for me. Hank, do you have any questions on any of this?
I don't. I appreciate the discussion. Thank you.
Wait, what? So if you were at Ipsilani 25 years ago, does that mean you were there when you were like 10 years old?
Do you, do you see this beard?
Eh, you know, COVID did that to all of us. It's just when you said that, I was like 25 years.
Was that right? Hold on, let me do, no, maybe, maybe I'm exaggerating. I, uh, started there in 96. And I left in 2006. So, I don't know. Like I said, I don't get with math.
I don't like to do math when it's, yeah, that's when I graduated high school, 96. I don't, I don't do the math.
Um, uh, all right, I'm going to move us to second public comment before we close, if anybody has wants to star nine or raise your hand feature. Star nine, right? Not star six.
Right. Star six is.
I, okay.
I'm not seeing any hands. No hands.
All right. With that, I think we can adjourn.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.